Good evening, everyone. I can see the clock in the room hasn't been changed, but it being about 7:00 o'clock on November 8th, we're going to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting. Just a reminder where it is, only 7:00 PM, and the polls are open until 8:00. If you have not got out and voted already, you do still have time. All right, so with that, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I didn't see you back there, Ally. I would have asked you to lead us, so go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anyone here for citizens input?
Mr. Gitani?
All right, do you mind just signing it on your way out? You don't have to do it now. But if you can come up to the podium, we do like to keep citizens input to about five minutes. And while you are here, people on the Working Mothers Group were wondering who the gentleman is on the corner of Beach Street with the flags. And can I confirm? I think it's you. It's awesome, so.
Thank you.
All right, all right, go ahead.
Johnny Gitani, 7 Willis Lane. I just want to come tonight and thank Jack and Mark for proceeding with the new town squares, memorial squares. And as one gentleman I'd like to also recognize is Carl Kush. Me and him were the ones that got it started back in the early 2000s. And I just want to mention Carl Kush's name. And I want to thank you, the Select Board, for giving permission to go ahead and do it. And I think the new memorial squares are absolutely outstanding. They're going to really, really be recognized throughout the town of Foxborough. And I'm going to miss doing them, but I can still kind of maintain them, I think. You know, clean them up as the years go by, and the poll's still got to be done. So I want to thank the Select Board for passing. And Bill, I want to thank you for, you know, what you've done back in '14 and '15 with Mike, what you gave me that day on Memorial Day. I'll never forget that. So I just want to combine, thank you all.
Yeah, and I found a newspaper article, too, about you. And I didn't realize that you were the one behind that until I dug back and kind of looked at that. So thank you to you for keeping those beautiful throughout all those years.
Excuse me, Leah. And Ally Rodriguez also. I forgot Ally. I was going to say something else, I wanted the board to hear it, too. You know, thank you, Ally. And so it's a great thing. So the next generation, when they see those names, they'll know what they're all about.
Yeah.
Good.
Wonderful. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, John.
I know I've used the opportunity to like, talk to my kids about them now, that I knew a little bit more about them. So it's been, it's been interesting learning. So definitely great. All right, anyone else here for citizens input before we get started? No? Okay. All right, so we have had a slight change to the agenda. The police department had something come up that they will not be able to make it. So we will have to move that item to another meeting. We're just figuring out when's the best time to do that. So with that, we will have the Veterans Day update and your appointment, please.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm sure everybody has seen these, but for those of you at home you haven't, this is the flyer for Veterans Day event on Friday. We are having the American Bombshells. And they are a national group, and they're a twist on the 1940s Andrew Sisters, Boogie Woogie, Bugle Boy thing. And they are fantastic. The trio that we are getting, one is a professional comedian and writes for Saturday Night Live. Another one is a Massachusetts native. And the third is a Marine spouse. All three are so talented. We are very lucky to get them. And then our keynote speaker, who I was just texting, making sure that like, all is going well, is Silver Star recipient Jonathan Hill. If you haven't heard of Cop Keating or the Battle of Kamdesh, Jake Tapper wrote a book called The Outpost, and they made it into a movie. Our keynote speaker lived it. The movie's about him and his men that day. Out of that battle was two Medal of Honor recipients. Jonathan was awarded the Silver Star. Eight killed in action. And they, there was about 400 insurgents infiltrated the outpost. It's absolutely incredible story. Jonathan is just, just a humble, humble guy. I ran into him, well, I met him in Texas when I was training. And I see this big old biker at the bar. And, you know, we start talking. And he had said something. And I'm like, wait a minute. Are you talking about Cop Keating? And he's like, yeah, I was there. And I'm like, oh, my gosh. And then I said, I need you for Veterans Day. And he's like, okay, done. So we are very, very fortunate. He comes in high demand, but we, Foxborough got him this year. After that, we are having food being catered by Roche Brothers, because, you know, nobody ever leaves my events hungry. We got pulled pork, we got sandwiches, we got chicken. We have Stromboli's and just so much food. It is family-friendly, it is free. You do not need a ticket. Show starts at 11:00. I am expecting a very large crowd. So I would say maybe about 10:30, 10:45 should probably start making your way inside of the high school.
All right, great. We're really looking forward to it.
Me, too. So this week, I don't sleep at all. So ignore these bags under my eyes, because they're not even designer.
I'm sure you look fabulous on Veterans Day. Remember your red suit last year?
I'm going to try. Thank you.
And how about your appointment, too? Are you doing that one?
Oh, yes, is he here?
No, but I don't think we told him he had to be here. So I know that the committee met with him, so.
Yeah, I spoke to him briefly on the phone. And he is Army veteran, I believe. He's younger, he's a warfighter. He is committed to veterans. He's coming from another town. And he actually sought me out and said, hey, I want to join your committee. And I said, yes, okay. No hesitation. So I'm very, very much looking forward to having, having him aboard.
Great, great. So I do think we just have a motion for that. And we do have Doc on Zoom. I should have mentioned that earlier.
Hi.
Look at him, right there in his seat on the screen. It's amazing. He can hear us, but we can't hear him.
That is really crazy.
Oh, no, we can hear you.
There we go.
All right, so all of our votes that we do this evening will have to be by roll call. So I will have Dennis make a motion. And then we will just have to do a roll call vote since Doc is remote this evening.
Before I do the motion, I thought his resume was outstanding. It's great to have somebody of his quality, you know, joining this group, so just.
We are lucky, yeah.
Motion to appoint Douglas Sylvester to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee for a term to end May 31st, 2024.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call?
Yes.
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
Mark, yes. Okay, I can hear him. All right, great.
Still waiting for Doc. Even though you told me, I'm so programmed.
It's great to have anyone new who's volunteering on any committee. So we're very excited to have him. And welcome to volunteerism here in town. Please let him know that when you see him.
Absolutely. I think he'll be around for Veterans Day. So I'll bring him around so everybody can meet him.
All right, awesome.
All right, guys, thank you.
All right, great. And then I think we're passing it over to Mark for another good news event.
Another good news event. I was actually just thinking, we're in the middle of an event season for Human Services with Renee's Halloween Parade, Ally's Veterans Day, and then what I'm going to talk about tonight. So my name is Mark Craig. I'm the Director of Human Services for those who are at home. Renee would normally be here, but she is actually at Gillette with our Women's Kickball League. There's 60 players up at Gillette. So thankfully, they were able to play under the lights, which is really exciting. That's run all through the Rec Department. So tonight, I'm here to talk about Light Up Town. So traditionally, this event has been actually Light Up the Town. So we kind of shortened the name a little bit to really focus on the uptown area of Foxborough. So it's new this year. There's a lot new. So the town meeting voters were able to pass a number of dollars to fund a complete decoration of the town common. So we have a professional lighting company, Red Nose, coming out. They have lit many town parks across the state of Massachusetts, including Faneuil Hall. So they're doing a professional lighting service. There's going to be garland around the common railing. 10 of the trees in the common are going to be lit up the trunks. And then that main focus tree is going to be very, very bright. It's going to look really, really nice. It's going to make sure that the common, you know, all the upgrades over the last few years are going to look really great. And then we're sort of expanding the overall event. So can I quickly read the things that are going on? Great, yeah, love sales.
We've actually got a little extra time now.
Oh, good. I'll go, I'll try and talk slow. So what's interesting is that company, Red Nose, is actually, they're also decorating a couple of businesses around town. I know the Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, they're going to be decorating them and maybe doing a few other businesses in the uptown area as well. So they're actually going to start tomorrow. So it's going to, you'll start to see the lights being strung. They won't be turned on besides one test until the 26th. So the event is November 26th is sort of the day of, but I have some sort of time. So Boyd and Library, they're doing a holiday drop-in craft during the day from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. A holiday ornament craft from 4:00 to 5:00. And they're going to do a story on the common at 5:15. New this year, Bethany Chapel is going to participate. So they're doing some Christmas carols from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. A jingle bell craft at 5:15. And when the lights turn on, they're actually going to ring their bells, too, to sort of add a little bit of auditory atmosphere. Grace Chapel, they're emceeing the event. They also sponsor a lot of the activities surrounding the common, including having dancers from Elite Dance Center. They'll be on Cell Street at 5:30. J.C.'s, they're decorating the manger from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM during the day. If you're available, I know that they're looking for help. So it's a great community feel to get out there on the common the day of and sort of really extend your entire day, make it a real festive day. They also are responsible to have Santa coming down with Foxborough Fire Department. And then there's going to be a post-Santa's workshop, meet and greet at Barrow's Insurance, too. So that will be great. The Boy Scouts will be doing smores on the common recreation. We're going to be, which is why I'm here tonight. So as we started planning this event, we said, okay, we want to expand it. We know in the future this is going to be a tremendous community event. But what can we do now to sort of make it just a little bit better than the past? So we started talking with the businesses, and a few had actually suggested shutting down Central Street similar to the car show that happened this summer. So we said, okay, we're not going to shut it down without a purpose. And I think we found our purpose. So we're going to have vendors on Central Street. We'll have cards for veterans. We're going to have a photo backdrop. Pat Patriot and cheerleaders will be there. We are working on, with great partners at Foxborough House of Pizza, snow coming on top of the roof down onto Central Street. It won't be real snow, so don't put it in your mouth. It will be soap. And then, more importantly, AJT Supplies, they're going to do a hayride. So it's going to be a hayride, but it's going to be sort of slay with focusing on the, on the holiday theme on Central Street, up and down, free rides to just sort of add a little bit more movement atmosphere. Also, throughout the day, the Senior Center, we're going to have a small craft fair. That's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We also are sponsoring Victorian carolers. So they'll be out in front of the library at 4:30. They'll move to the common area at 5:15 and then kind of stroll up and down Central Street. So as you can see, we're sort of expanding, but also sort of building for the future. And when I was recruiting Bethany Chapel, I told them that I think if they get in the ground floor now, that five years from now, they're, they're set, ready to go. So more businesses, if they're interested in participating, they can either reach out to Renee or I. We are looking for more activities. We're working on publicity now, but it's an ever-changing activity. So we don't want to put something out and have it change. But I think we're very close to a final publicity, which is very soon. So again, this is November 26th, the day of. The lighting is actually going to be at 6:00 o'clock. So if you miss everything else, if you get to the common area at 5:45, that's okay, because you'll still be able to see the lighting. And then obviously, the lights will be on throughout the season until past Christmas, too. So that's it. It's a lot really quick, but any questions?
The only thing I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, you know, I'm a traditionalist, is the fire department bringing Santa in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
There, Santa's coming down from the fire department. And then we're sort of trying to debate where to unload and make sure that it's visible. So Grace Chapel is looking into renting a staging area. So that way, we think there'll be a lot of people. So that way, everyone can see Santa. When the lights turn on, we'll be able to have, have that visual, too.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah.
And then just reminding everyone, too, about parking in the Schneider lot at the, at the bird, at the end of Bird Street, too. There's a ton of parking down there. It sounds like it's going to be a really busy day. And we've secured even more parking down there. So just a reminder. Getting people in the pattern and used to using that lot as well.
That's a great spot to get in and get out afterwards, too.
Exactly. Any questions? Did you have a question? No?
No. It sounds like it's going to be great. So when we first started doing the lighting of the tree, I was part of the Friends of Foxborough Recreation. And so we were just like, to hear what it's going to be now is just so exciting, because we were like, I was running to dunks. We got hot chocolate donated. And then I think the J.C.'s got cookies donated from Stop &amp; Shop. And so it has just emerged into such an event. It's going to be really cool. Bravo.
I'm really excited. I think the professional lighting services, and if you look at pictures of Faneuil Hall, it's just, it's picturesque, it's beautiful. Not to say it wasn't in the past, but. And then J.C.'s are also switching their lights over on the light poles that they purchased last year from colored lights to the warm white light. So it is going to be a very, very like New England, quintessential New England feel. I think it would be really, really nice.
So exciting. It sounds fabulous. And I can't believe that this is already in a couple of weeks.
This is something that we've been hoping for for a number of years. We were building up toward this, this sort of climatic thing. And I'm really glad it's going to happen, so. Great for you.
That's finally here, so great. Thanks so much. We look forward to hearing more and seeing you there.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks so much.
Do the motion.
Oh, yeah, right, we do have to do a motion, sorry.
Motion to approve the use of public way application for November 25th from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM for Light Up Town event sponsored by Foxborough Recreation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, so we're just going to roll call?
Yes.
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
Thank you. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are a few minutes early on the tax classification hearing. And I do think we should just give it, you know, the seven minutes or so until we get started on that. So why don't we go down to the action items? There's four down there. And if we can handle those, maybe we'll be right about, close enough to get started on the other piece.
You want to say anything and just go right to the motions?
No, they're just the action items. So I think we can just go, go right through them.
All right. Motion to approve two one-day beer and wine licenses for Asherito's Taqueria from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on December 24th, 2022, and January 1st, 2023.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Oh, yep, right, we have to go down, sorry. Leah, yes?
Can I just ask a question? Did you say 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yeah.
So, oh, okay.
That's the motion, yeah.
Okay, no, I was just curious. I think they close at 7:00. That's why I was a little.
It's maybe with the game day, are they?
Well, yeah, what I was going to say, that's Christmas Eve, 1:00 o'clock game. I just didn't know, you know, do we go above what their normal hours are? Or does that even matter?
I don't know that it necessarily matters. Their application definitely does say 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
So maybe they're just being safe with what time it takes to get the liquor out of there.
Maybe, yep.
Yeah.
No, I just, I didn't know if, I was just, I was like, oh, 10:00 PM. Sounds just kind of late, especially on Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, you might be right, maybe.
Yeah, just to get the, it's a busy day in the.
Covered to, to, to make sure the liquor's gone and everything. Okay.
All right, so we did the roll call. We're good on that, and we can go to the next one.
No, I think we should do roll call.
I thought we got through it. Maybe we didn't get all the way through it.
I said yes.
I said yes.
I think, I think then I said to, yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right, Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
All right, great.
All right, good. Okay, on to motion to accept a $1,000 donation from Louise Mittenberg to the Council on Aging for trips and programs for seniors.
Any further discussion? You got a second?
Oh, I'll second there.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
I really miss you here, Doc.
Big shoes to fill.
No, it's very bizarre seeing myself next to Dennis.
Okay. On to the Historical District Commission. Motion to appoint David Devine as an alternate member for a term to end May 31st, 2025.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? Just say another new name to a board or committee. So that's exciting. Thank you very much. All right, roll call?
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the minutes. Motion to approve the October 25th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes.
All right, and given that we still have about five minutes, why don't we just go into your town manager's update, Bill?
Okay, thank you. Just a few things I wanted to bring to your attention that this is the first week there were, just, just myself and Christina, actually, this week, and Kate, who's still, still working in the office. So we're a little shorthanded. But right now, we do have, I want to give you an update on the West Street Dam situation. So it's, so the contractor has completed the bypass piping and has installed the Coffe Dam on the primary spillway culvert. Demolition of the existing culvert will take place over the remainder of the week. A new water main in the section of the dam, approximately 400 feet, will be installed next week. National Grid is also scheduled to be on the site, site next week to install three new utility poles. Contractor will be recording with, coordinating with National Grid to make sure that both groups can work in the same space safely. The road is impassable until further notice. We did work on developing the schedule for the annual town meeting, including the budget process. So I'll be sharing that with everybody shortly. We're just going to, going to meet on that tomorrow morning to confirm it. But it starts effectively on November 17th and goes all the way up until, actually, June 28th, which is when the final transfers are done by the town manager for the, to finalize the budget for the year. We did have a, Christina today worked with Dan and worked with the, with the advisory committee to, to actually get the schedule pulled together so that they're on, we're all on the same page with them in terms of speed, meeting spaces, and when they're actually going to meet. So that's, that's been pulled together. And let me see. I think that was, this week, we did actually submit a Kenneth Pickard Municipal Innovation Award. That's under consideration by the MMA for the annual town meeting. And also, we did submit our annual report as well for consideration. Hopefully, for the second year in a row, we can maybe come away with a victory on that one. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on both those fronts. So I think those are the key issues. Special Town Meeting warrant, just to remind everybody that we are going to meet, the town meeting is going to be held on January 9th at this point. It was, it was the date we agreed on, right? January?
January 30th.
January 30th, I'm sorry, January 30th, correct. January 30th.
With a snow date of February 30th.
There's too many dates flying around in my head. So January 30th with the, with the, with the snow date to be the following, following week, I guess. And then, what's that? Yes, Semrec, so thank you. So Semrec, we are going to have a meeting on the, on the 15th, which is a week from, a week from tonight. And we do need one member of the board to, to serve in that capacity. So, and Dennis, I think you would express the interest in doing that. So, so as long as the board is in agreement, well, Dennis will be the rep. There's no need for everybody to attend, you know? It's, it's something, it's all, it's just to vote Noah Wood in as, as an, as the next member of the, of the team, so.
Yeah, I didn't know if there's going to be competition.
It's all yours.
That's why, that's why we're discussing it publicly, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know Noah very well. I know the community very well. We spent a couple of decades there and I'm very familiar with this kind of process coming from healthcare.
Yeah.
You know, central dispatch, you know? Used to be done by hospitals.
Right.
You know, now it's done by fire departments for the most part, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Sounds like you're the perfect representative, don't you?
I thought so.
Yeah, so that's, that's November 15th, right? If I'm not mistaken.
Sounds like your colleagues agree with you, too.
Obviously, anyone's welcome to join. Everyone's welcome to join.
Right. Anybody who wants to. They, there's no limitation if you all want to come. It's entirely up to you, but, but if Dennis wants to be the representative, he can do that, so.
Okay.
All right?
Thanks, Dennis.
Do we need to do a motion on that one?
Probably just a good thing to do.
And Dennis, it's under the Town Manager's Update, General Updates on Town Business and Other.
Yes, 7.2.
Yeah.
Oh, here's a motion. Okay. I didn't see that. Motion to appoint Dennis Keefe as a Select Board Representative to vote at the Semerick Board Meeting on November 15th regarding the addition of a new member to the Semerick District.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes. Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Thank you.
Great. That's all I have, ma'am chair.
All right, great.
Just a, just a reminder on the, on the, on the, on the HR side, we are going to interview five finalists for the HR Director on, on Thursday. And if, we'll see what comes out of that group. And we could potentially bring one or two back depending upon how well that process goes. But we do have some pretty strong candidates, so I'm actually quite excited about the field. So, see how it goes.
All right, great. So we are exactly on schedule now for our public hearing. And Dennis does have a public hearing notice to read for item five, which is the 725 Tax Classification Hearing.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing at Foxborough Town Hall, Foxborough, Mass. on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022 at 7:25 PM with the Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor and the Finance Director to review property valuations and the total values of all property subject to taxation in each of the four classes of real property as defined by law. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the adoption of a residential factor and then determine within prescribed limits calculated by the Department of Revenue what percentage of the tax burden is to be borne by each property class. The Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor and the Finance Director will provide information and data relevant to making these policy decisions, including the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and will have the right to provide oral and written comments or suggestions.
I'll second it. We, I think we just have to read it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
Okay.
You have the remote there. I was wondering whether, Mr. Beck, can you put the presentation on, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm still at awe how Doc is right at his seat.
He's sitting at his seat, yeah, it's amazing.
It really is.
I think you're going to get quite a lot of presentation.
Yeah, he's about to, yeah.
Yeah. He's gone now. Can you just move forward with it? You got the clicker, right? Okay, great.
Point towards the window, Marie.
Towards the window, Marie, behind you.
Seven o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then while we're waiting for this, we'll just keep George right here while we go into the Finance Department update next and the audit discussion as well. So we'll just roll right from item five into six when this is done.
You all set?
Christine?
I think we're just getting the, see how the presentation's small for the people at home? We're just getting that all set.
I'll share my screen.
So, you know, since you're new to this, too, there'll be three motions at the end of this that were two.
There's actually four, I think.
Right, four.
Right. And then we just have to close the public hearing, so. It's a little confusing, first year, I think.
Yeah. Lot of information.
Yeah.
But just try to give you as much as we can so it helps you with your decision.
Yeah.
And not overwhelm you as well.
What's going to overwhelm us?
It was well done.
All right, we're just, oh, we, now we have the presentation. Okay, great. So I think we can go ahead and get started. Sorry about that. We're just having, just getting that presentation up on the screen, but I see it now. So I think everyone at home can see it. And if they can't, I'm sure someone will text us. Okay.
All set?
All set.
All right, so I'm going to go through the initial reading of what we have to for the state, and then we'll get into some statistics and obviously questions and answers. But it's something we typically do every year, that the statistics change, obviously. The housing market changes, trends change. So the purpose of the tax classification hearing is to set the minimum residential factor for the town, which will determine the shift in the tax burden between the residential and the commercial classes. This is also known as setting the split rate for the town or the shift. The Select Board should vote the following options: the open space discount, the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and the minimum residential factor. So the options for the shift are the open space discount, which would allow up to a 25% of shift of assessed value. It's not recommended, as this program is already addressed with the Chaplain program, shifts up to 25% of value to the residential class, increasing the tax rate on the residential class. Only one of 351 towns have that option. The residential exemption can shift up to 20% of the assessed value. It shifts the tax burden between different values, between lower-priced homes to higher-priced homes. The application of this option is in major cities in Cape Towns with seasonal properties. 15 of 351 municipalities have this option. The small commercial exemption, you can shift up to 10% of the assessed value, requires an extensive analysis on business operations, less than $1 million in value and less than 10 employees is required. And this, for the small business, will not help those leasing a business space as the exemption goes to the property owner. Also, the commercial and industrial, the other commercial and industrial class would have an increase in tax burden. 14 of 351 municipalities have this option. Foxborough has never implemented these options, and the Board of Assessors has recommended to decline these options.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Do any contiguous towns have these options?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
They're not often used.
Right, I didn't think so.
I know the North Harbor has, I think, the small commercial exemption. But the residential exemption, the open space exemption, those are very rare.
Those are more down in the Cape and, you know, resort area type, type places, yeah.
And can you just speak a little closer to your microphone, please?
Yeah, sorry. Just trying to get my.
There you go. You, too, George. Okay.
So, as far as the classification of the property, Foxborough is a residential town, and the residential portion is increasing. We're about 80% residential and 20% commercial, which is, commercial is still significant, but the residential portion is increasing, while the commercial side is pretty much static or decreasing slightly. The assessed value is by classification. Everything is increasing in value, pretty much, except for the personal property this year went down a little due to depreciation on the personal property, but the residential class values is far exceeding everything else. Commercial's going up at a much lower rate, industrial a little bit more than that. So this is a, a new slide this year, just to better explain the levy calculation. The tax levy is the amount a community raises through the property tax. Tax levy is taking last year's levy and adding 2.5% per Mass. general law plus new growth. This shows you the historic levy for the town on the left, in the left bar chart, and the calculation on the right. So the interim revaluation we are in right now, every five years, we do a full certification with the state. We are not at that point. That'll be in 2025. But just for your information, as you know, the market is very strong, sales were very high this year, and the residential sales were up 15% this year. And that's for single families. Conner's actually up 24% in one year. That's really high. In one year, we don't see that very often. So, in addition to that, we do a lot of inspections and permit inspections to check on property changes. We have to, it's a requirement of the state. And we've done 400 to 500 this year, and we do that pretty much every year to stay up on the changes in property because obviously it changes the value.
Tom, I just had a question on this.
Yep.
My first time going through this. So that 15% increase in valuation, does that get passed along this year or is it over the, at the end of the five-year?
Well, that's, we, we look at all properties in town, but we look at the sales on the town. And that's what, to generate that percent increase.
Right.
And then that is, those adjustments are made across the board to different, different neighborhoods. You know, every neighborhood's a little bit different depending on the land values and the neighborhood and the housing values. But, so, that 15% is not going to go on everybody. It just goes on certain properties, it's an average, basically.
But the 15% is sales volume instead of, like, the value of a house?
Say that again.
The 15% is that sales volume?
No, that's the increase, the median increase.
Of the assessed value of the home?
From the sales.
Okay.
Median increase from the sales.
Right. So it does apply to this year, though?
Yeah, it's this year, yeah.
Right.
Just like the condominiums and everything else.
Right.
So as far as trends in the market, we are seeing a slowdown in transactions. It did finally hit, and it was probably more than likely from the interest rates going up. And they continue to go up. So as you can see from that article from the Warren Group, the number of sales has dropped significantly, 16% and 24%. So the sales prices are still strong for property because there's still supply and demand, but the actual activity is down significantly. So this chart, I just want to show you that for a five-year snapshot, this was kind of like what I looked at on this because it was kind of impressive as far as the actual residential average values. From 18 to 23, the average value in town is going up 25% in five years, which is pretty significant. And then if you look at the actual average sale price, the average sale price in the same period has gone up 32%. So like residents are making out quite well with the equity of their homes. But of course, you know, the values, you're going to pay more in taxes because the values go up. So as far as the new growth goes, the new growth is what we have to add to the levy every year. It's the construction, the hammer and nail construction. We had another pretty good year as far as that goes. We had 19 new residential units, 11 new houses, eight new condominiums, and the big hit this year was 29 Wall Street, which is going to be a major 50-unit apartment complex that gave quite a boost to the commercial side because there is going to be a commercial element to that. There's a store in the front, so. That's it for that. So the residential construction, as I said, this is just showing you historically what kind of residential construction's been going on. It's been a pretty consistent issue to, to past years as well. This is the other new slide that I put in, just, I wanted you to realize the average single-family tax bill, what Foxborough pays versus other towns. And you can see Foxborough is around $7,500 on average. This is for 2022, not 2023. We don't have all that information yet. But they're around $7,500 for Foxborough. But if you look at neighboring Norfolk, it's almost $10,000, and neighboring Sharon is $12,000. So, I mean, I think that's a reasonable situation for Foxborough that you're in right now compared to other towns.
Isn't some of that because of, I think that both those other towns have very little business?
Sorry?
I think both those other towns have very little business.
We couldn't say that about Mansfield.
Sharon has, Sharon has almost none.
But still less than, less than Mansfield. Mansfield's got a significant higher business level.
Yeah. But I just, I just wanted to point out that those two examples don't really, don't really justify that, that we're paying more because we have much more commercial than both of those towns.
And they also do not shift, they don't shift the tax rate in both those towns. So this chart is just similar to what we had last year, showing that Foxborough's got a favorable residential tax rate. It's in the lower half. The commercial rate on the following slide has Foxborough a little higher on the chart, probably due to the shift that you have at 1.22. And this is just showing the tax rates again with the Division of Local Services. They have a lot of data on their websites which you can, anybody can look up to see where, you know, you compare to other towns. A lot of this information came from that. So as far as what's proposed this year, the proposal is to maintain the shift of 1.22. That's an increase in taxes of $395 on the average house, which is a $100 increase from last year. The thinking is that while the equity gains of the single-family homes have received and the 25% value increase over the years, this is not a huge increase for the residential compared to all that equity, the equity that they're getting. As far as the commercial goes, commercial increase would be flat because they're, basically their value is flat. They, they're not increasing at the same rate as residential, so there isn't any increase in the taxation. And last year, they, in the previous years, you can see from that chart, they paid a significant amount more. This year, they would basically be, be flat.
Although the rate would change, but the assessment's gone up, leading them flat.
The rates are going down significantly in all of them. Because the value is so high.
That's, that's an important, I think we say this every year, and I, and I know you guys already know it, but I'll say it anyway if, if anybody's watching us, there's an inverse relationship, and it's nothing to do with Foxborough, it's the way the state calculates this, this figure. People will say, well, gee, my house value went up, but that automatically brings the tax rate down, or vice versa. My house dropped in value and then the rate goes up. And a lot of people, there's a misconception when they're, they're sitting home, they would say something like, well, gee, my, my, my house dropped in value, or, or the, the rate was lower than it was last year. How come my taxes went up? In the end, it's, it's built on what the value of each individual house is. And, and there's that inverse relationship that if it's, you know, your house was, last year 500,000, now it's a million, then the tax rate is now half of what it was, the rate itself, or vice versa.
So if we can go to the next slide, I just want to call that out specifically because I know for me, understanding that inverse piece.
Yeah.
Was important. Marie, if you can just go to the next one, just to show everyone, so, you know, the rate has been going down as home values have been going up. So just to illustrate that further here, you'll see, you know, obviously we have a high point of 17, and then, you know, the pandemic's a little different, but hitting with, starting at, you know, maybe 2019, we're at 1470, 1457, 1474, 1452, and now down to the lowest, it's been at 1421. But the property values have gone up, which is why in total, the total tax bill will have a slight increase, but the tax rate has gone down.
Right, right.
Making sure, yeah.
Right.
Call that, oh, clearly.
Well, this is just basically showing, similar to what the other previous slides had shown, as you had said, Leah. It's the same information in a different format. This next slide shows the shift of the surrounding communities. I did call around to see what their, you know, potential shifts are for some of these towns and I did find out from wall poll that they may be shifting more on because they're looking at doing a school, and it's going to hit the residents quite a bit. So they're going to shift, I think, more. I don't know, they haven't had their hearing yet. So sometimes when these towns do debt exclusions and things like that, that hit the residents, they'll shift more on the commercial just to kind of help with that increase.
Makes sense. And then where we see the flat, that's where they don't have the shift, like Norfolk and Sharon, as you said.
Correct, yeah, correct. So this is just our working spreadsheet. It kind of gives you the options if you wanted to do something different and what the actual increase would be. It's kind of hard to read, apologize for that, but there's just so much data to show. But basically, what the Board of Assessors is saying, based on the overall value increase for residential, it's 7.7%, and only a 1.8% increase for the commercial, the Board recommends to maintain the 1.22 shift as the most equitable at this time. As you can see, the shift options in the table on the right, it's pretty consistent with where, what you've been doing in the past five years. You go up two points, stay the same, stay the same, stay the same, went up two points. So you've been fairly consistent and conservative, which is a good, a good policy, I think. The next sheet is just the, where we get our information from the state, that comes directly off the gateway. So in summary, you, you have to select the minimum residential factor in order to set the tax rate. The Board of Assessors recommends to maintain the 9435 minimum residential factor and the 122 shift, and decline the other additional options. The new tax rate will be 1421, a 31-cent decrease for residential and 1837, a 47-cent decrease for commercial, industrial, personal property, and the LA5 excess capacity would be 40,799. If you were to be drastic and change, go back to the single rate, you know, I wouldn't recommend, but it's in there because it's just kind of for knowledge purposes, I guess.
It's an option, yeah.
Yeah. If you wanted to go back to a single rate of 1506, that would increase the average residential tax rate by $865 and decrease the commercial rate by 7,430. So, with that, that's pretty much all the information that I have. I can take any questions, make your motions.
It is a public hearing, so do we have anyone here from the audience with anything? No? Okay. So I'll open it to the board if there's any questions.
I thought it was very well done, very clear, easy to follow, and try to make it easier. Logic is, is solid.
We love the comps, too, with the local towns, so thank you for sending that along. They were kind of, you know, in the middle.
Right, exactly. That's a, you know, something that's favorable to Foxborough.
Yeah.
I just think the way it gets presented to the, to the town is important because the tax rate is actually going down, but the tax bill's going to go up, the bottom line.
Right.
So you need to position that in a way that people understand it because it's not intuitively obvious to, to a lot of people.
It's also important to point out, too, that, and I think this gets caught up in the, in the discussion a lot, is that, that the budget, that it's an indirect inverse relationship to the budget, too, that the budget, but the budget's actually gone up very, under 3% over the past three years. So, which means that it could have gone up a much higher level, but it didn't because we kept the budget down, which, but the, but the, the constant driver is the values, which is markets, market-driven, not us as a town. So I think.
You know, we want to keep Tyreen still, we want to, you know, watch spending, we want to cut where we can. That, that's certainly still the, the objective.
Yeah, because it's going to, it's going to be a tough year. I mean, we're all hearing, I mean, our, our, our fuel bills are going up by 60%, you know, and, and I, I get it. I mean, you have to have a formula to work it out. You know, unfortunately, I think what the average citizen sometimes doesn't understand, including myself sometimes, is that, listen, the, the, your property value going up is only a plus if you're selling your home. If you're not selling your home, basically, your, your home to you is, has its same value, you know? If you're not going anywhere. And so, I understand there has to be a formula to, for it, but I mean, I, I just think the direction where not just Foxborough is going, everywhere is going, is we, I, I think the next year or two, we need, we need to stay as lean as we can.
And this, the, the shift that we have, the split, has less than burden, as you could see, it would bring everyone's tax bill up, I think it was 865.
Yeah.
If we didn't have that shift. So, you know, we have the shift on, like, some other towns that puts a little bit more of a burden on the commercial than it does on the residential as well.
Plus, you can tap into that increased equity to take out a loan or do something else to really, you know, meet some of your ongoing requirements. So that's, that is real money.
Actually, I doubt it. That's one, that's a point that sometimes I never even think about, that, that, yeah, you do have a, a value, even if you don't sell it, you can get a certain amount of loan money.
Yeah. But you can pay a much higher rate, too.
Right now, yeah.
Not a good time.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so any other questions from the board before we start in on the motions? I think we can go and read them right as they are in board docs.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. All right, any further discussion? Anyone else? Nope, no one? Okay.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes.
Don't forget, I don't know where he went, but he's still there someplace.
Mark, can you unmute?
Can you hear me? Mark, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to continue with the split tax rate and adopt a residential factor of 0.9435.
I'll second that.
Any further questions? All right, roll call.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes.
Mark, yes.
Thank you.
Motion to vote no on residential exemption.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes?
Motion to vote no on the small commercial exemption.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes?
Motion to vote no on the open space discount.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Dennis, yes?
Leah, yes?
Stephanie, yes?
Mark, yes?
All right, great. Thank you so much and thank you to the Board of Assessors for all their work, getting these recommendations to us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. All right, great. Well, I think you're dismissed, but George is still up here.
Well.
Are you staying? The whole department's staying, okay. All right. All right. So, um, we're getting back to our department updates and finance was, um, already on the docket to come in. So we're not going to get into the specific nuts and bolts of the budget this evening. We're going to save that for, um, the budget summit that is scheduled for December 6th. That's on that draft schedule that we had, that we sent out just to, you know, set the expectations for everyone. And then the second, you may recall, we talked about the audit last meeting and how it would be challenging for someone to come in to do the full audit. Um, well, it came to light after that, that there actually was still time to do this for the 2022 audit. And, um, you know, in speaking with people, it sounds like most people agreed this is the best time to do it too, before the, the changing of the guards, if you will. Um, so I was in, in touch with Larry Uy, who's the chair of the Audit Committee. It, you know, and he did ask his board to reach out to me individually to let them know if they support that. So we'll just move on to that after because I think fortunately that is something we are going to be able to do for fiscal year 2022. So with that, I'll hand it over to you guys to go over your budget process and transition and then we'll talk a little bit more about the audit. And just let everyone at home know who you, who you are for those joining, joining new. You're off the hook.
You might just want to introduce.
Okay, we just make sure we're getting the old microphone, uh.
Okay. When we talk about, I, I mean, I think tonight when we came, when we were coming in, um, we're giving a department update, which the budget process, obviously that's, that's a piece of it, which like you said, is the, um, is this, um, calendar that we're putting out. Um, from a standpoint of a department update, what we usually do is we've got the three major departments. And again, I, I, like I mentioned a little bit earlier, um, I say some of the same things every year because, and I know you guys have heard it many times, but I always have to assume that the next, um, whoever's watching out there may not have. But the finance department itself is, uh, made up of three very distinct, um, departments that are housed under one roof. One of them being the, uh, the Board of Assessors, another being the treasurer, and you can maybe call it two departments right there because in some towns they are separated. The treasurer slash collector and the town accountant. Each one of these various titles comes with a, uh, kickback full of statutory authority and requirements. And I think sometimes with the idea where they were all housed under one roof, people just think it's like one department and everybody, they, they call it the revenue department here. But in reality, each one of these offices has a different, uh, task involved. One of the small things that, that, that people don't understand is that the treasurer and the accountant are actually the inverse of each other. One is the, the natural check against the other. One is investing money, putting it into certain, um, areas. The other is actually taking the monies that were put out by the town meeting or authorized by the town meeting and boxing it up in little areas so that money isn't spent in, in, in ways that wasn't the way that the town meeting wants. So with that, I will probably start off to say that, um, I think the, the first thing that wanted, that you asked from a standpoint of this department was, you, you were talking about a transition. And I think the last time I was here, I, I was surprised when I walked out in the hall and, uh, the Audit Committee was with me and they were sort of taken back. It said, oh, I didn't know you were, were leaving, which I guess I just assumed everybody knew it. So I'm on the, the, the process of leaving in, in June, but that's been something that we've known about for a, you know, a while now. So when we talk about just simply a transition or a transitory period, that wasn't something that just came up and we were, we were, uh, uh, you know, like wow, what are we going to do now? Actually, two years ago in November, uh, myself, Bill, uh, at the time, Mike, and, um, and, and I think really with the auspices of the Board of Selectment, we, we made a, a new position in my office, which we moved Marie, the town accountant, to the Assistant Finance Director. Uh, with the idea in mind that, that that would give Marie a couple of years to go off and, uh, not that she really needed it, she was pretty good right when she started, but she's been on, on a course of taking, uh, MPA courses, uh, at Suffolk University. She has gotten, um, uh, you know, uh, certificates in purchasing. She has gone through, um, the, the accountant's course, which, you know, a few more people are doing now. So for the last two years and for the remainder of this year, she'll continue on that course. So as far as the transition goes, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to step in the, um, in the shoes of either the, the town manager or the new town manager, whoever it's going to be. But I think the plan was to put Marie in as the, uh, Finance Director. And I think that would probably be the best pick you could possibly make, given that she's already gone through all of it, knows the insides and outs of, of the town. And would really not surprised or, or anything like that. This isn't a, a knee jerk or anything. It's, it's been going on for some time. So that would be at least the transition. Now, obviously, since she's the town accountant, we'll need to go out and get a town accountant and that would probably be more towards the end of this fiscal year, you know, uh, April, May, June, something like that to begin, you know, a search or something for that. So that would be the trans, uh, the, the, the trans, the transition, uh, plan moving forward. With that, I usually go into allowing each of the department heads to give, you know, um, updates on the things that are vital to their particular area. So we'll start off with, with, uh, Tom, who happens to be the, you know, again, if you haven't noticed, uh, from the thing, he's the chief assessor. Marie being the town accountant and, um, and Paul Maloney being the, um, treasurer slash collector. So start off with you, Tom.
So in addition to all the, you know, preparation for tonight, we have other things obviously going on. It's constantly changing as the year progresses, but, um, so we revised the townwide valuation and changes were approved early with DOR. They have a, having a push to trying to get towns done sooner because what happens is all the towns come in in late November, December and they're, they only have so many staff. So we're trying to move it forward and we're able to do that this year, which is, you know, beneficial for everybody. Um, the, we, we did a lot of work on the GIS system in the mapping program in town when I got here. Um, if you'll, if you have used it, you should go take a look at it. The GIS is totally different than the one it was a year and a half ago when I got here. It's much more complete, easier to use. You can navigate to your property or parcel. We also get people coming in all the time asking for their plot plan. Well, we don't have plot plans, we're not surveyors, but they can go on to this GIS, zoom into your property and you can see an outline of your parcel. It's pretty much as close as you're going to get to a plot plan without a stamp from a surveyor. So that's very helpful to people. Um, in addition to that, I work with Ryan Norton on a lot of changes in, 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 in the water department to make, you know, it's a constantly evolving process with the mapping to try to make it better. And it, it is getting better and every year we're, we're improving it. Um, in addition to that, we're trying to integrate the GIS with our assessing software and we already have actually pretty like 90% done. And what you're going to be able to do is when you actually click on your property, you're going to be able to click on your property record card. So you're going to be able to see every detail on that property that we have in the assessors' office. And we have a separate website that does that now. That's going to be redundant and more than likely the Board of Assessors is going to do away with that. It's going to actually save money for the town. So I'm pretty excited about that. It's really a nice feature to have. And then as I talked about earlier, we're doing a lot of inspections to, you know, verify the valuation process because it's two things. It's the market and the cost. And in order to see the cost, we have to see your property. So that's what's happening.
Hold on, you have a second?
Oh, I'll send.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just remember to stake list that mic if you can.
So, um, just a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. George, I already covered the succession plan. It's kind of been in, in the works. Ultimately, that's up to you as the board, since, um, his position is appointed by you. So, um, that's that. I did want to cover the FY22 closeout. Um, like you mentioned earlier, a lot of the numbers will be covered in detail at the summit. So I won't get too deep into them, but I, I did want to note that our, so our free cash was certified. It came in at 5,223,577, which is pretty good compared to the previous year where it was 3.9 million. That, the increase was largely driven by, um, there was 1.4 million in unspent budgets and surplus revenue of 1.6 million. Uh, the revenue, um, the increase there was mainly driven by some concerts towards the end of the fiscal year. Um, and also the renovations that are going on over there, the permits that are coming from that are pretty substantial.
It's even better this year.
Yeah. Uh, the audit of FY21, um, I know you all had an update a couple of weeks ago. Um, so you already know that the audit was clean. The FY22 is in progress. Um, I think you wanted us to kind of get into a little bit of that. Um, I don't know if you had some specific questions on, on the FY22. From what I understand, uh, it looks like the Audit Committee wants to see various tests done. So we can, um, we can certainly meet on that and just kind of get a better understanding of what they're looking for. Um, just from our yearly audit, some of the tests that they do, um, they look at invoices, receipts. They look at checks that we've issued, purchase orders, contracts. They look at our grants, um, our reconciliations. They look at our bank statements, um, encumbrances, fixed assets. Um, we do give them a copy of our entire ledger so they could see every single transaction that has gone through our system. And they also look at our expenses in July through September with a magnifying glass just to make sure that they're being posted to the proper fiscal year. Was there anything else?
Well, I mean, I was holding that as to, I assumed you wanted to have that conversation in a moment, but.
I mean, yeah, we can, we can even do it now, you know.
Okay. I, I think that what, I think what Marie is trying to tell you is I did get, Larry had sent me a, um, a copy of things that, that, you know, well, his stuff that you'd want to go over. And I, I'm not sure, I think, you know, whether it's, it's coming out in the way Marie is, is saying it or not. For example, there, there were some things in his letter that he sent that would be like, well, you know, maybe they could check on the, um, the meals tax and the, um, hotel tax, okay? What I don't think anybody understands is that's a direct, um, wire transfer from the state of Massachusetts. It comes in, it doesn't come in through the, the, any of the hotels or anything to that effect. The state of Massachusetts does all the calculations. They don't share those calculations with us. We just simply get on a quarterly basis, a hit, and here it is. This is what you get this month. Um, somebody asked, um, I'm getting into, I, I don't want to go too deep into it, but somebody asked a, a, a year or so back, well, can we get how the calculation, where are we getting all the money from? And we actually made a call to the statements and basically they said, we don't give you that. This is what it is.
Yeah, and maybe that's what we can take off the table, but like other expense accounts. So, you know, whether it be recreation or school or, you know.
Right, right. Um, some of the things like Larry mentioned, things like, you know, the signatures on, on various items. One of the things that I don't think anybody understands is that each department head, when they make a, um, a purchase, they have to submit a voucher to us. That voucher has to be signed by the department head. It then is pulled in a big, uh, pool, put in by Kathy, one of our opera, uh, uh, person who works out of the office. It's then reviewed by Marie and then sent to me. I sign off on it. I then send it up to Bill, who ends up signing off on it as well. And, uh, the only place that I think this is because you, you've adopted the strong manager type of, of situation. In other towns I've had, it used to be signed by the Board of Selectment. And I think that that's, just doesn't happen here because it, it's the way, you know, you folks are doing it. But each one of those vouchers are tested on a yearly basis. They'll come in and randomly pull various vouchers to see, well, first of all, was this illegal expenditure? Did it meet the requirements of, uh, uh, the, the spending requirement? Did you overspend? By the way, did you go out to do a, um, a, uh, RFP or was this, you know, bid on when you did it? All these things are selected, pulled, was this signed? Where is that? Some of the things, I, I think Larry added on there was things like, well, what about like the money that comes in from the, um, from the, uh, stadium? Well, like last year, I got a call from the stadium so that they, they had already been over there, meaning our auditors, asking for the opposite side. We have it on our sheet that we collected $1 million here. Okay, show us where that came from over here. And again, they check against it to see.
And maybe it's like making sure that the payment amount is right, times the right amount of seats and tickets and all that, you know?
So they, they do check that type of thing. When you talk about the grants and what have you, we are, and by the way, this is not just Foxborough. It's pretty much any town that, um, that in the state of Massachusetts that exceeds a certain amount of money coming in, okay? In grant money, you are then required to do what is known as the Single Audit Act, which we get every year and that's done, where they have to do another whole drill down separate and apart from the regular to say, did this, uh, we'll call it, I'm not picking on the school, but, uh, you know, here's a school, right? I'm looking at them because they're usually the biggest and then maybe your police after are the second biggest on the state and federal. So then they go over and, well, okay, well, this is the chapter one reading program. Did they spend all the money the way they were supposed to on that? And then they go over and pull their pieces off. So there are a number of things on here. I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to try to go through every piece that he had, but I think what we're saying is, is there's a lot of this that, that Larry has that I don't know whether everybody understands that this is happening already, okay? And now, in the past, in other incarnations where I've been, if there was a, I, I think what he was asking is have a discussion, do you see, meaning me.
Yep.
A, a place where, um, you know, like I think that there's a big, uh, problem here and I think that I would like them to go over to this spot and take a look at it. I've actually done that in the past in my capacity as both the Finance Director and the Town Administrator. But it's usually when there is some discrepancy or something that's really out of whack, that doesn't look right. At the moment, I will probably tell you, department to department is the town of Foxborough running at 110%? Absolutely not, and there isn't anybody out there that is. But I don't have a nasty feeling or there's nothing that indicates to myself or, and I am pointing at Marie because Marie is the final, your town accountant is your final, um, let's say traffic cop in the finance area, who assumes the responsibility of saying, is the voucher that this guy just put in, is this the real McCoy? Uh, are we, has he done everything that he was supposed to do on this? We've actually added in our department, if you remember, we have Audrey, the, the, now the purchasing, uh, department. So there are now other hoops to, and I hate to say it like that. There are other restrictions that people have to go through to be able to meet that appropriation or meet the, the requirements to go out. Marie has instituted things like purchase orders, which the school has been using for a number of years so that people can't accidentally overexpend on that. I think when you go down it, and I'm not saying again that everything is 110%, but I think many of these things are happening and maybe nobody understands that.
Well, I think, I think for now, we, we want to move forward with the full audit. I think everyone agrees. I think everyone agrees with that. I think it's just maybe, you know, figuring out where the focus is and like, forget the specific examples, but it seems like it's like internal controls, revenue accounts, expense controls and best practices was like the theme I saw, and figuring out, maybe talk to Bill Yuchna, you know, you know, what makes sense and where.
Well, my biggest concern right at the moment is, is when Marie and I put together the budget last year, we predicated it on, this is how we're doing the audit. My guess is, I don't know where, where it is at the moment, they are, yes, they're working on it right at the moment, but there is going to be a cost.
Yeah, I think everyone realizes there's going to be.
Okay, and I mean, normally what I would probably say is, well, Bill and I talked it over and at the end of the fiscal year, we'll simply take another 5,000 or 10,000 from someplace and move it in there. I don't know, I'm just saying 5,000. I don't know how much it's going to be. But he isn't going to be here, and I don't, so I can't say, well, Bill and I discussed it, so that's on the, on the books. It's got to be known to the next person or whoever's going to be here, that we're going to need to be reimbursed.
So, there are two things. First of all, I, I don't, I don't have any objection to doing a full audit, and you know, just, I think this, you know, at the end of administration is probably a good thing to do. But I would say that we just need to be clear about what the definition means.
Right, right. And I don't think we need to define that tonight. I think this is just, we want to move forward with that and then more to come. Dennis, say something.
No, just a couple of things because I talk with Larry extensively and I'm the Select Board's representative, the Audit Committee. And some of the things I've seen over the years, public, private sector is, do you allow check requests outside of the normal purchasing process? Because that's a sign of potential abuse because it doesn't generally tie into the budget process.
You mean, I, I think if, if I'm understanding right, and sometimes I misinterpret, there can be no checks cut that are not on the warrant, okay? Meaning it goes through the warrant process? If that's what you're asking me, and I hope I'm not like botching your question.
You have a purchasing process, you have a PO in place.
Right.
A request comes in against the PO.
Yes.
The money's there, you can cut the check.
Right.
Is there any way of circumventing the PO process with a, a direct check request? You know, it's urgent, I need it right away, there's no PO, but can you get it right away? That's very common circumstances why I'm bringing it up.
Right. In, in our case, I'm going to say, has it ever happened? I'll say, there's been once, I think in four years, there was somebody that had an emergency and they needed to get something. And of course, we went through all the, the checks about it. They came to me, they came to Bill, and they said, is it all right if, if we got a check and then Paula makes it and then puts it on the next warrant?
Yeah, I don't want to get into the weeds and waste anyone's time. The other thing is.
No, normally you can't just say, I'm going to do it.
Cash. Is there a lot of free cash in the system? Because you really need really good controls when it comes to cash and, and the collection of cash and the, and the disbursement of cash. I'm talking about real cash. It's not an issue like it used to be, but is there a lot of cash in the system?
I, I think what you're referring to, and again, if I'm botching it, just tell me shut up, you're not on the wrong, you're on the wrong track. Oftentimes in different towns, okay, what they used to have is like a cash box in a, in a certain department, okay? So, oh, I need this so that if I have to go out and buy some batteries or something like that. In this particular town, I'm not aware of any real major, does anybody really even keep cash on hand? It's all really done through the warrant.
No petty cash like in the 90s?
Uh, in the, in the 90s, you had a bunch of that? Yeah, well, you know, usually, and, and you know, it's funny that you, you asked that, petty cash is a headache, okay? Because most of the time, you'd set up something, and I know what you mean, in the 90s, somebody would have tin in their office with 100 bucks in it. And this is just in case we need to go out and get gas or some fool's job. We don't need to do that anymore. They've all got gas cards and we got our own tank, okay? But then what would happen is, it, it was too small of a mouth for anybody to be clipping it, but it was so small that then Joe Blow would go out with his thing, spend 16 bucks on something. Well, did you bring back the slip so that we can reimburse? Oh, I forgot, okay? Pain in the neck, okay? So, we don't do, if there's any petty cash out there, I can't.
Typically, if, if there is any petty cash out there, it's like $900, and it's typically only for departments to provide change. From what I've, since I've been here, about three plus years, I've never seen it get used.
So, I think just to keep this on, on, on track, I think we want to do the full audit. And, you know, when we're talking under $10,000, I've, I've seen the 5 to 10, I feel like that's something that we're going to be able to figure out. So, I think we support both things. I think we just have to figure out internally and through the committee, you know, where the focus is and, and just hash that out a little bit more.
Yeah, it seems like just about every year, I know, the schools give money, a lot of the departments give money back, and you always have the $75,000 reserve fund that you can go to AdCom at the end of, you know.
Yeah, so we'll be able to find that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's short money.
Right, right. Just as long as you guys remember it.
It would have come out next year, so now it's, you know, we're just doing it a year early, so.
There's only one other thing I'll, I'll just throw up, not to, and this isn't to be, but if, if what you're trying to do, okay, is you're, you're trying to focus on internal controls of the, I, I, this sounds like I'm being sarcastic, but it's almost, you're almost like asking the guy that's going to be audited to tell you where you want me to.
Right, right.
You know what I'm trying to say?
I think that's why the Audit Committee is good to give ideas and talk that through and talk.
Right, I mean, because, you know, it's, it's like, well, I'll audit myself, everything's good.
Right, so we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that and see what makes sense.
So.
All right, so we'll continue with Marie on, and then we'll.
The next couple of items, I'll, I'll go through them quickly. You all have the FY24 budget calendar. Just a couple of dates I wanted to highlight. So, December 6 will be the financial summit. The preliminary balanced budget will be distributed out to both you and AdCom on February 1st, with the preliminary budget review meeting on the 14th of February. For FY24, something we're trying, or our goal is to try to submit to the GFOA, so we're trying to go for the, the budget book. I had a consultant look at our current budget book, and he let us know we're about 70% of the way there. So, really, what's left to do is to really kind of, one of the main things that GFOA likes to see in the budget books is, are what are known as strategic goals and performance measures. And basically what they want to see is how each individual department's goals tie to the townwide goals, so your town manager goals. We're basically using those and just making each, each department tie their goals to those and come up with some performance measures, just so we could kind of keep them on track with that. We, we're in, we're additionally working on a five-year forecast, also working on that trend monitoring system, hoping to have that all pretty much done for the summit.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, it's a lot of data collection, but that's, I've been really busting my, my behind trying to get that done. So, that's, that's something, like I said, it's, it's in progress and the goal is to have that all done for the, the financial summit. Finally, with the talk about, you know, all the turnover that's happening, something that myself and the staff in finances has been working on is a townwide, or a department-wide policies and procedures document. And basically what this document does is it goes over everything that we do in finance. It covers budgets, how we assess the values, revenue collection, cash management, investments. It goes over operating expenses. It includes our financial policies, how we do our accounting and financial reporting. It covers risk mitigation and then finally our procurement. We're getting real close to having that wrapped up, and that's something that I'll be sharing with you all.
Kind of wraps into that like truck binder, like we're talking.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is, yeah.
It's the, yeah, the finance version of that. And then I think that was about it. Then I'll hand it off to Paula.
We're doing our usual fall fun stuff, senior Medicare supplement, open enrollment. Good news was there was no increase to the MedX2 policy plan, and that's primarily what most of the retirees are on. So, that was good news. And those are due in by November 18th. We shouldn't probably have a lot of changes. The letter's been out for a while, so that's coming to a close. We're training staff. There's a lot of new people in town in all different departments. So, we're trying to do, we're actually Thursday going to have like little sessions where we're going to just, with newer people, say, do you need to know how to put a local receipt in, in MUNIS or enter your payroll exceptions? Just kind of a Q and A we're going to do with people. And we're going to actually show them how to do, you know, people that haven't done it before. So, that's good. Tax collections, we're at 99.3 for FY22. We actually are in good shape for the first half of this year at 96 and a half, so.
First quarter, you mean, yeah.
The first two bills, yep. So, that's pretty good considering, you know, money problems people are having. It's very good. We just did the senior tax payroll, as a matter of fact, today. We had 36 people, which is a few less than last year. We had 41, and it was about $50,000. So, that'll go on to the tax bills as credits to those people. We did water lien letters probably a month or so ago. So, anyone has any water over a year old, we send them a warning. We try to collect on it as best we can. So, we lean as little as possible to the real estate bills. But that file, we have to kind of wait, you know, close because it actually takes it right out of the water receivables. So, in that little lag between when the tax bills are actually created and we take it out and create the file, there's, there's kind of a lag and people could pay. So, we try to extend it out as long as we can. We did get, I think we got about 25,000 of what we put out. We put out letters, about 190 letters for 185,000 dollars.
Okay. And something that I asked about too, you know, I, I haven't spoken to the board about it because of meeting law, but like I had just been curious about, you know, houses that hadn't paid taxes. Like I saw Mansfield did an auction and, you know, I don't think we need to have that discussion tonight, but we've really never done anything in my time here and, you know, I don't know how far or how much like the oldest one goes, but at what point do we want to talk about maybe cleaning that up a little bit before that, that turns over? So, maybe that's an item for us to discuss in the next couple of months as well.
Well, the, the truth is that you have properties in tax title.
Right.
And unfortunately, it was, they have progressed now to the point where they were in, in land court, which suddenly came to a grinding halt as a result of the. Of the, all I can tell you is, is Paula and I have gone over that, and I, I'll just say this, yes, there's a few pieces that are in, in, in land court.
Yep.
One of these days, we'll actually get a judgment from them up there and we can actually take the, the property. But I'll say this, judging from what I have seen in other towns comparatively, very, very little.
Right, we don't have much, but I just don't want to forget, like, I know no one's going to forget about them.
No.
But, you know, with the courts opening back up with COVID, you know, someone had asked me about one of them, which just got, you know, me looking into it and looking at a list, so.
Yes.
Just something to kind of keep in back of mind.
Like I said, I went over with Paige probably like a year, year and a half ago.
Yeah, and I think she sent me a list because I asked her.
These are stuff we really want.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get going on it, which we did, and then they got hung up in land court for two years.
So, let's just keep that one in mind though.
Land court is even normal is like molasses running uphill. But now you add the COVID thing to it and forget it, it's almost petrified. So, it's, you know, it's just, you're just sitting here waiting for them to make a move.
Just some food for thought, though.
You also have the land of low value. Sometimes what happens is when parcels get combined, like a little piece of a land doesn't get pulled in, and you could auction those off too.
Yeah, there was a number of those. You can tell like landlocked little pieces on the list. They're, they're tiny things, but they are still just, you know, out there, so. And I just noticed, I think it was Mansfield just did it like last week. So, it just, it caught my eye. All right, anything else before?
Basically, we're going to create the third and fourth quarter tax bills, hopefully once we get approval from the state on the tax rate you just voted on. We have to have them in the mail by the end of December. And like I said, we've already done the pre-stuff as far as the senior tax on the water lien, so we should be in pretty good shape as long as the state approves us quick.
No, just, you have documents for the board to sign tonight, correct? Relative to the tax rate, senior tax rate, Tom?
You don't have to sign anything.
Oh, great.
Our, our board does the signing online through the gateway.
Okay.
And Bob Cutler signs certification from the town.
Okay, great, even easier.
I think one last thing that I'll, I'll circle back on, and you just said it a minute ago, but I had somebody call, I don't know, a year or so ago, and somebody said something to the effect of, you know, well, this is why our taxes are so high because nobody in, in Foxborough pays their taxes. And it was, it was kind of involved with like, it had nothing to do with you. It was on the, but a second ago, you just mentioned we're at 99.8% collection, which is pretty good in, in, in any town. I mean, that's not bad, you know, and so.
Yeah, I have two, two, well, one probably quick question for Paula and maybe just a comment. Do you think, I, I know maybe I think it was the first time that you came before us like with an update, you had mentioned that you were a little bit bogged down with, you know, some HR things that fall under, under your category. Now that we're, at least for now, unless things change, we're going with a straight HR director, do you think some of the stuff that maybe bogged you guys down a little bit in finance might shift over to a new, someone who's specifically HR?
Well, I'm assuming that's something we would talk about. I, I don't, you know, I don't really know.
Yeah, I think we have to look, I think we have to look at that and even, when I went up to like the stadium to observe some of that, like the stuff that they're doing for like onboarding, every detail is like wicked cumbersome. So, I think we should look at, you know, a, a lot of those things for sure.
Yeah, I did, I just remember you mentioning it, and I think I, I made a comment, but it was a little bit incorrect. And I, I added an email with, with Mike and Bill afterwards. I was, you know, because, you know, Jimmy tells me certain things, how they do it, and I was a little bit incorrect, but I just know maybe the, the shift is going to be a little bit different where, at least for now, unless something changes, when the new town manager comes in, we're going to go with a straight HR director. So, made me think of you and maybe some other things. And, and the other, only other comment I have, and I'm going to be very careful with my words because I don't want to offend anybody, but I just, I want to make sure, I think it's great to have a succession plan, and while, you know, I think Marie is awesome, I did pick up the first discussion about the audit that a lot of, well, and you know, George is leaving and there'll be, you know, and it kind of seemed like we were referring to Marie as being his replacement, and then tonight it actually came out. I just think we should be a little bit careful only because we have a new town manager, and no offense, because I think you're wonderful, but I just feel like the talk tonight was very like, you know, that you're the succession and with the new town manager coming in, and I'm guessing just with every position that we throw it out and you get applicants, I just, you know, we, I think we've made that mistake a couple of times in town where we think somebody is the next person and it doesn't turn out that way, and, you know, then sometimes there's some sore feelings or whatever. And so, I just, I, you know, I just want to bring that, that we should just be very careful about just automatically assuming who the next person is. And unfortunately, just because it came up tonight, Marie, like I said, I, I mean, no offense, and you very well may be the next person, I think it's hard to, to have that discussion before you even have opened it up to applicants and, you know, I just, it just kind of caught me a little, that we should just be careful before we're, we're, you know, going in that direction.
And that, that's what we're expecting, obviously the job's going to be posted and all of that.
Yeah, and I was trying to think how to say it without.
And even, you know, like, let's say it's not her, she's still in her role and has, has seen and done a lot of this for succession plans.
Exactly, exactly. And, and tonight it was just because that was a conversation with you. It was, for me, it wasn't directly. I just want to be careful how I worded it, that I didn't think that you are, maybe that you will be the next Finance Director, but I think it's just hard for us to, to kind of assume that at such an early stage in the game. That's all.
Well, I mean, the, the only thing that I'll, I'll counter on is, is that, that when asked what the succession plan is, that was our plan.
Oh, oh, yeah, and I, and I understood that fully, but I just, you know, there'll be a process when, as you're leaving, just like when Bill's leaving or anybody's leaving. So. So I didn't mean any offense at all, and it may just play out that way. I think it's just hard to kind of openly for us to be like kind of saying that, that's all. You guys might have that succession that you're hoping that we'd be behind the scenes, but it's hard to throw it out on camera, and if it doesn't play out that way, I just, you know.
Well, I don't, I mean, just to, I don't think it's a promise, I think it is a succession plan, like you may have a succession.
I think I was saying that it was going to be on the vote of selectmen when they did it, and I wasn't speaking for them or the town manager at the time.
So I don't think anyone here is promising anything to anyone, but however, it is important to note that finance people are extraordinarily hard to find. You think it's hard for a town manager? When do you come to the finance director position? It's extraordinarily rare right now.
And with that being said, I, you know, like I said, I've been impressed with Marie from the first time when you came in on AdCom and our books, our budget books that you put together and stuff, I just, I just thought it just came, it was coming across a little awkward for me, so, just my opinion.
Part of the reason why it's been discussed was because one of the things we've talked about, because it's so hard to find people, that the best way to kind of create an opportunity to fulfill a position is to train your people internally, so that they are in a position to compete for those jobs successfully. But just so you know, I mean, it's a challenge right now to find those positions.
Yeah, I mean, it's always great when you have internal people that can step up and move into a role, but I do, I do agree with Stephanie in this one instance. I wasn't comfortable filling the HR position without the town manager coming in and having a say. I think the finance director is an even more important position in terms of the organization, so that's another, you know, area where I think the new town manager coming in might want to have significant input. Has something to do with your capability of competence.
If I could, I know I'm up there in space somewhere.
Mark, we can't, Mark, we can't really hear you, if you don't mind, just... There we go.
Is this a little better?
Yep.
Oh, okay. You know, don't forget that it was mentioned earlier that we are the ones that are hiring the new finance director, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a few years ago, we did say that, you know, we want to see succession plans in all the departments. And as a good department head that George was, he followed through on his succession plan.
Yeah, agree. So, all right, I think we've made that one clear, and I want to make sure we're already about 15 minutes behind, so I just want to stick with it. So I got to say though, you guys did exactly what we're looking for, like here's the highlights of what we did this year, so bravo. Good job, a lot accomplished.
Thanks.
Thanks. No, not yet. All right, so I think all we have left is selectmen's update. And that's all that we have, right? I'm just looking through everything. All right, so for new business, we already talked about the West Street Dam. There will be some Elm Street roadwork on the 18th and 19th, and I did see the big signs are up, kind of in front of Joblot Plaza, alerting people to that. Everyone has probably seen the new bus service, it's going from the Logan, going to Logan from the Mansfield MBTA station. That's already happening, like people are like, oh, when's the schedule come out? And I said, it's already happening, I think it started last Saturday, so that's fabulous. We've had a gap, I didn't realize that the old Bonanza Bus out of Foxfield has been gone for almost 20 years now, so that's fabulous. There's a COVID flu and, COVID and flu clinic coming up on the 18th at Town Hall from 11:30 to 3:30. Can they pre-register for that as well? It makes it move a lot faster. All right, any other new business? All right, and I would have taken this earlier, sorry to make you sit through all that, but you guys weren't here yet and we had the public hearing, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to go over this without seeing you, without seeing you here. So the last piece that I have for old business is just a response to the Vandenbooms, you guys had come in on October 25th, and I know I've had a number of meetings, you know, to even better understand every point that's in that letter. So I do have something that I'm going to read, and of course, I can give you a copy of it after, we can, we can get it sent out to you from Christina as well. This is from me, so with open meeting laws, you know, we can't meet, so it's not a statement from Stephanie or Dennis or Mark, but certainly, I don't want to get into a big, long-drawn discussion about this tonight, once I read the statement, I think you'll understand. But upon consultation with Town Council, the Zoning Board Chair, and Town Professional Staff, we had been advised to respect the application review process currently underway and the protocols established by the Zoning Board for the, for the conduct of its hearing to avoid undermining the Zoning Board's statutory authority and subjecting the town to potential appeal slash legal exposure in this matter. Therefore, in response to your comments during Citizens' Input at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting on October 25th, we offer the following. So I'm pretty sure this has been communicated already, but Matthew Brennan, the Director of Public Health, will be able to be on site to monitor the upcoming drilling and testing activities related to the subsurface assessment at 119 Moore Street. Environmental Partners, the Zoning Board's engineer consultant, will also be reviewing the results of this testing as the Board's professional peer review consultant. We deem this independent review to be adequate to assure the integrity of the site assessment process. Number two, the Board of Selectmen have heard your concerns, however, with due recognition and respect to the Zoning Board's autonomy and its established hearing process, we don't deem it appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to interfere with the pending hearing proceedings. And then lastly, as you're likely aware, I imagine at this point, there is a statutory appeal process available to any aggrieved parties in the event the decision of the Zoning Board upon completion of the comprehensive permitting hearing is deemed unsatisfactory or legally deficient. So as always, we appreciate your comments and involvement in the public hearing process, and I assure you that we'll continue to monitor this carefully in the public interest. So I can assure you that we've read that entire letter, had many meetings, but I think that kind of summarizes a lot of, a lot of the points that are in there. So we do have to respect the process that's going on right now, and there is a piece, you know, offered to you as well, to have Mr. Brennan be able to observe those as well. Anything else from the board?
No.
Okay. And I know I read that, but I do have a copy of it here as well. All right, so with that, any further discussion?
Are we allowed to say anything?
I mean, if you want to make a quick comment, just, you know, we don't intend to get in a back and forth discussion here tonight. So I understand that your letter has lots of pieces in it, and I think.
I just wanted to ask.
Yep, yep, come on up, come on up, and we'll keep it quick.
Okay.
Because I do want to be respectful of the process that's going on right now.
I'm not reading, this is actually my work. I just wanted to ask if it would, well, one thing is, I wanted, I didn't get a chance to send this to you, but I did want to send you something from the HAC, it's the Guidelines for Local Review of Comprehensive Permits, because I had a different idea of your involvement and actually all of the Board's involvement, once it hits the ZBA, that actually the ZBA should be inviting a Planning Board member, the Board of Health, any, you, one of you to go, and you actually are entitled to have a little bit more.
Encouraged.
Encouraged to have a little bit more involvement in that whole process. I can send this to you, but it's for non-traditional subsidy programs, specifically the LIP program. It does say that the involvement of the BOS in both the design and programmatic aspects of the proposals should continue throughout the process. So I just, I don't know if we, there's a disconnect there, I know you met with legal counsel.
I mean, I would say I don't think we need to be invited, they're public hearings, it's the hearing process, I can assure you, I have followed every single one, even if I'm not necessarily there, I have watched every single one. I don't know if other people have attended in person, but anyone's able to attend from any board.
Okay, and just that also that the application, the completeness of the application, that's generally the first thing in other towns, the first thing that they look at, and they'll actually deny a comprehensive permit if it's not complete, and it is, the ZBA should consult with the BOS before proceeding if that is not complete. So that's actually, because it is your responsibility to check that over, because the state does defer quite a bit to the local BOS in a LIP as opposed to a standard 40B, so the ZBA should be reaching back out to you, that's all in this article.
Okay, yeah, and I know I personally have been in touch with Barney, I had a meeting with him, I wanted to understand, you know, some of, some of your concerns in your letter, I wanted to walk through everything, so.
And just one other thing, would it be possible, I understand that the Board of Health agent would be there, I had two, two requests on that. One, would the Board, Board of Health Commission members be invited to come? I think that would actually be.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that we're the right people to ask that to, I think that this is something that should go, you know, I'm sure that they sent you out a response, I don't know who it came from, but I think.
Bill Casparra sent me a response.
Okay, so it was not facilitated through a town?
No, it was Bill, Bill asked for my email.
Okay.
To send it, for Diana to email it to me. And it basically said that his client had, had said that he would not allow Environmental Partners on the property or to monitor the sampling, he did not say why, he just said he would not. But one of the questions I wrote back, it's a little bit awkward, we're not having a November meeting, so it's a little bit hard to get any kind of response, but the concern I have, it's not that, it's not really in the sampling itself, it's in where they're going to drill those holes, like I mentioned before, it's, you know, when you're, it's kind of like a COVID test, you know, you can kind of say, yeah, I want to go on vacation, I'm feeling a little sick, yeah, oh, negative, or you can do a real COVID test and it's positive. That's just a silly example, but a little bit of the, what this looks like to me. So what if Environmental Partners went out prior to the drilling? If the applicant would allow them on the property to place poles where they would, where they would recommend drilling, and then what kind of well? Because there's several kinds of wells they would put there.
I just, I don't think they were the right ones to answer, I.
Who is? Because I don't have, there is no more meetings, I don't know who else to go to, I'm kind of stuck.
I think that you should reach out, I think that you can reach out to one of the town staff to help facilitate that to the applicant, or the ZBA chair, you know, I don't.
So I did, I did ask, I responded to Bill's letter, I wasn't quite sure if I was supposed to, but I said to Diana, this is in response to Bill's letter, can you please post this to the ZBA website? So I imagine that all the ZBA will be looking at it. But where the applicant is not present to make decisions at the meetings, it's a little bit difficult, and then they canceled the November meeting, so now I would just like to know from the applicant, and I don't know where to go, what, does he have an objection to having, so this is my, this is what I'd like to see, Environmental Partners goes out, they tag it, and then the drilling gets done, and maybe they don't pick where Environmental Partners tagged, but then they can explain to the ZBA, we drilled here, here, and here, we did two, the two of the ones that, you know, Environmental Partners picked, and then we did over here, and we can see, is it, is a cost, was it a cost constraint? So then the ZBA can actually look at the data they have and say, is this a complete study that we can trust and we feel confident that there's not contamination? And I don't know why the applicant wouldn't allow that to happen, it's our own town, Environmental Partners is our hired town group to just come on and just post, and then also do the peer review after, but we'll know what it is that we're peer reviewing, what kind of wells were placed, how long that it was there, and we would get, I appreciate the Board of Health, but I don't know that that's his expertise.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, I can make a phone call tomorrow and, you know, raise this certainly with the town staff and ask them to raise it with Barney, or I can certainly reach out, but, you know, there's a lot of intricacies to this process and a lot of legality, and I don't want to speculate about, you know.
Right, which is, I do want to send you this article if that's okay, because I feel like there's a little bit of difference in opinion of what your responsibility as.
But I understand the board's position here is very limited.
Yeah, and we have talked to the town council.
I want to be very careful that it doesn't get drawn into a, into a situation that's really the Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals area.
Right, but I'm just looking at this, this is the appeals group, it's on the mass.gov website, it's not something silly that I just found, you know, it's legit.
But you'd be going backwards in the process if you did that now. So in other words, the process has already begun, it's already gone down this road, now you'd be going to reverse the process, which.
I don't want to reverse the process, I just want this board to continue their oversight of this process, where we don't have a November meeting, and some questions that are, I think are legitimate, are not able to get answered prior to the drilling, it's just a little bit uncomfortable.
I understand so much more about the testings and the requirements and the order of things that are being done now, and I think that if you have a conversation with the ZBA chair.
I don't know how to do that.
Um, I'm sure his email is out there, I mean, I don't, and again, I don't know what he's able, I don't know what he's able to communicate during the, during the process, so I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn because this isn't our area of expertise, and I'm trying to be respectful of this board that we appoint, you know, to handle this, and there is an appeals process on, you know, the decision and the legality, so, you know, I don't want to, I understand your, your perspective and your questions, I just would ask you to just understand that I don't want to answer something that I'm not sure of, I'd rather direct you to the right people to give you the right answers or the right next steps. So, you know, maybe from here, let me talk to Paige tomorrow and see what.
Yeah, I just don't know how to, like, like I said, I honestly just, I don't know how to get from here to there, I don't know how to get, and I don't feel like I should be talking to Bill Casparra about it, that doesn't feel like the proper channel.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it, I completely, completely understand your position, and, you know, like we've said, I have spent, you know, hours just in the last week really understanding everything in that letter, so truly, you know, know that I really feel like I have a better understanding too, you know, with a lot of that question, so.
We do, we do, I just, I wish that the environmental study had been the first on the agenda, so that we weren't under a time constraint now to get this done, this is, that's part of my concern too, and even, even Mr., I forget his name, but from Nagel Associates said that, you know, we have to get the trucks out there, we're trying to get this done to get the study done by December 15th, which Environmental Partners thought was a tight constraint, so there's a lot of time constraint and there's cost constraint, and whenever you have time and cost constraints, you just want to make sure that things are done thoroughly and not just done to check a box, and that's our concern.
Yeah, I think no one wants anything to be built and anything contaminated, and there's going to be the testing, and from what I understand, this might be even happening earlier in the process than it needs to, but again, I don't want to speak out of turn to, you know, it's really not our area of expertise, but from what I understand, this is happening even earlier than it needs to in the process. So with that, I'll take it, I'll take it back and get you in touch with the right people before the end of the week, I'll commit, you know, to making sure that even if I don't have the answer for you, at least I can get you to the right person who can get you to the right process for that by, by end of day Friday.
That'd be a huge help.
Yes, thank you.
All right, and I, again, I apologize that you waited so long with that public hearing and everything, I just, I didn't, I would have skipped to that, but I didn't see you guys here when we started it, so.
It was kind of like a root canal. I suffered through.
Now, now you know all about the tax rate, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Dennis, nice to meet you.
All right, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and let's move to adjourn, because I don't think that we, oh, I have one thing, actually. Christina had just let me be aware that earlier when we approved the use of public way for November 25th, it's actually the 26th. So there was just a quick typo in that, so it is the Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, right? Yep, so just a little.
Not the Friday, it's the Saturday.
Yeah, just a little quick date correction on that, it is the 26th, not the 25th. All right, great. All right, so just a motion to adjourn with a roll call. Thanks for joining us remotely, Doc.
You're welcome.
Where you want to go on vacation?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, and roll call?
Dennis, yes.
Leah, yes.
Stephanie, yes.
Fuck, yes.
All right, great.
Righty.
Hi.